Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to Order. Like to make a reminder on a couple items. Out of courtesy for everyone, please silence your electronic devices. We look forward to hearing your testimony tonight and appreciate you joining us. In effort to have enough time to hear from the audience member, we ask that when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address for the record. Limit your comments to five minutes to allow us to hear everyone or from everyone that'd like to speak. At this time, we will consider the consent agenda. Tom?
Item 1A, Planning Commission briefing of Tuesday, December 3, 2019. Item 1B, Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, December 4, 2019. Item 2, Consent Agenda petitions, and item 3, Consent Agenda approval.
Commissioner?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Alright, passes. Alright, Tom?
The next item up is regular agenda approval.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Alright, regular agenda.
And the next item is item 5A, petition, rezone 011-525-2019. Rezoning from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the C-N Conservation Districts located at 2900 East Benson Road.
Commissioner, Albert Schmidt, playing office. This item has had a request by the applicant to be withdrawn, so staff has done so. Requested... So no need to have it tonight.
Thank you. Look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the withdrawal. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to withdraw? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Alright, withdrawn. Next item.
Item 5B, petition, PUD 011-527-2019. Plan Unit Development, Initial Development Plan Amendment for Updating PUD Plan to Reflect Latest Concepts. Located at North Career Avenue and West 60th Street North, USD Discovery District.
This applicant was unable to make it to today's meeting, so we're looking for a motion to defer this item to the February meeting. Otherwise, I can take any questions if you want to get into it, but otherwise, it'd be exciting stuff in February. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, a motion to defer the item. You want to set a specific?
To the next.
To Albert.
February meeting.
To the February meeting. February 5, please.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to defer it to February 5. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Alright, deferred to February 5. Tom?
Item 5C and 5D. 5C, designate district for tax incremental district, TIF 22 application for proposed TIF district. And item 5D, petition approving the project plan for the tax incremental district, TIF 22 application.
Good evening, Commissioner. Dustin Powers with the Planning Department. Tonight, as Tom stated, we'll be looking at 5C and 5D, which each will have their own requirement for a motion, but I'll present both of them here right now. Tonight, both of these items are related to tax increment financing application number 22 for the city of Sioux Falls. Staff is recommending approval of both of these items, and I'll go through that review and process. The petitioner, Lloyd Companies, is also here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. When looking at the proposed TIF district that's up on the screen, we're looking at a portion of Track 1 of the Sioux Steel addition to the city of Sioux Falls. It is seven and a half acres, so it's the north half of the Sioux Steel site in downtown Sioux Falls that's located between Falls Park West and the Big Sioux River Greenway. Or Big Sioux River, excuse me. Based on the project that I'll share on the following slides, staff is going to be recommending this move forward to the City Council, also with a TIF agreement. So in front of the Planning Commission comes both the boundary and the project plan. If it moves forward to City Council, there'll be a development agreement that'll also be associated with their review of the project. With that, we'll be recommending, as we'll see through the project plan, $21,508,407 for the TIF eligible expenses, plus the financing cost associated with that to support the preparation, site preparations, as well as the construction of a parking structure that's needed to support the development that we'll share with you in the following slides. Based on those improvements, we do anticipate an increase in the annual property taxes by $1.6 million over what they are being collected today, and we'll talk a little bit more about those also in the following slides. Again, looking at the site layout, looking at this map, where actually the top of the map is the east with the north on the left-hand side. Again, the project area is seven and a half acres, and then the overall project budget for this project is $185 million. Just to give you some of the images that we'll talk about, and then on the following slides, I'll get into a little bit more detail. This would be looking from the north, looking from the north to the south. What you see here is a nine-story office tower along with a hotel and convention center on the center and the right-hand side of the screen. Here, we're actually looking from the east to the west. One of the items that, with the Sioux Steel project and with this project, they've really looked at how to activate the pedestrian space associated with the development. Again, with hotel and office, and then on the next slide, we'll see the idea of residential along with the parking. There's a lot of mix of uses on the site, and the pedestrian atmosphere that's activated through their, in this case, the alley that's between the hotel and the office space, along with the other retail shops that are associated with the other buildings, really follows some of the items that we look at in our 2025 Downtown Plan when looking at a site in our Downtown PUD. To get a little bit further into detail with the project, we'll look kind of north of, on the north part of the site, looking at the hotel first. The Hotel and Convention Center total about $75 million in construction cost. Seven levels for the hotel, 217 rooms. And then the convention space will have 60,000 square feet of convention space. The office tower building is a nine-story building that'll total about $43.5 million. There's 173,000 square feet, with about 140 of that being usable for the office and the retail space. Also associated with this is a riverfront restaurant that you can see on the very top of the screen. Looking south of 4th Street, that'll run through the development. The request for the TIF that's in front of you is for the parking structure. What you can see is that the overall cost of that parking structure is $24.9 million. It'll be an eight-level structure that'll total 900 to 930 spaces. That structure is also kind of enveloped with private development around it, so that you won't be able to see the actual parking structure as you go by. That development is five stories, so in this case, the floor-to-floor of the parking ramp is much shorter so than the private development in front. So that five levels aligns pretty well with the eight levels of the parking structure. What you'll see in those five levels, and I'll scroll back to the images just real quick here, is that there's 30,000 square feet of retail space on the main floor, and then the top four levels will be 100 apartments wrapping the parking ramp. So again, if we scroll back just to this slide here, on the right-hand side is where the parking ramp actually is. You can see that it's enveloped with the retail space on the main floor, along with the residential above. So now that we've kind of reviewed what the project is, we want to talk about the TIF considerations that are in front of the Planning Commission here tonight. So again, we're looking at a project, designating a project boundary as well as the project plan. When looking at these items, there's a few items that the Planning Commission takes a look at. One, is it a proper fit within the current zoning district? This is zone downtown PUD or Planned Unit Development. That really harbors our RE6 form, a mixed-use environment. And so what has been proposed here is definitely fits within that zoning classification. Also, does it align with our comprehensive plan? When you look at some of the goals of our comprehensive plan, it talks about effectively managing growth, you know, with infill development. Obviously, this is something in our downtown that we have to accomplish. On a, anytime we're doing development, we're trying to find ways to increase density within the same boundaries that we continuously have for downtown. Also, in the 2040 Plan, we talk about the urban form and that we should develop places, not spaces. And I think that when you look at the overall concept of this plan, it's not just looking at one individual building or one individual use, it's really looking at how that, the entire place is developed and how it encompasses not just the development itself, but the riverfront that we'll also be working with them on in terms of our Phase 3 of the River Greenway, and also how it incorporates with the Levitt Shell and the Falls Park West that surrounds it. Another thing that we looked at is that, along with downtown, we do have our own downtown plan that goes beyond just what the comprehensive plan calls out. And again, we believe that that aligns with a number of the objectives in the downtown plan. The downtown plan talks about stimulating economic development. That supports not just the strategic use of our public resources, but private investment, and we believe it does accomplish that. Increase our residential base by adding the 100 residential units we saw on the screen. It definitely accomplishes that. And then also creating a visitor-friendly atmosphere. And again, with the hospitality component of this project, along with the walkability and the surrounding uses in the development, also around the developments are definitely accomplishing that. In our TIF plan, so the TIF plan that you have in front of you or the project plan, there's a number of items called out in South Dakota Codified Law. And I'm not going to read through all of these, but they're all factored into your project plan. So if you look at the, each of those items as an example, the Economic Feasibility Study, Section 6 references to what section it is in your project plan that you have in front of you. So again, there's 11 items, the five on the screen. So we have the Economic Feasibility Study, the detailed estimate of the project costs, the fiscal impact statement, and the description of the methods of financing are all included in there. And we'll actually go through a few of these on the next slides. Also showing a map of the existing uses, so that's really your boundary map that has the aerial on it showing you what's there today, which is the Sioux Steel operations. A map showing the proposed uses, which we've went through already, and then also any zoning changes. Again, this, what's being proposed is in accordance with our Downtown PUD, and so there's not any zoning changes proposed. So when we're looking at a TIF, you know, when city staff receives an application, we kind of use the following as the evaluation for all TIFs that we look at. So reviewing the project financials, primarily the primary uses of the TIF funding, as well as the benefits that it'll provide. And specifically, we obviously look at downtown, but we also look at the city and the state as a whole. After a review of the project financials, we do believe that there's some extra cost associated with the parking structure that's associated with this project to achieve the density that they're trying to achieve on-site. The parking is instrumental to being able to do that. And so we do believe we've met, you know, with the project financials, there is a gap necessitating the TIF. The primary uses of the TIF will be for everything related to the parking structure, so site improvements, as well as the construction of the ramp. And then we also look at the economic benefits and the benefits that we'll see for the project. Obviously, this will promote a lot of additional parking in the area, which, if this moves forward in the development agreement, they'll be brought in front of City Council. It will detail how the public's usage of that ramp will be accommodated. Also, activating an underutilized site, you know, this has been an industrial site for over 100 years, and it's definitely been, lived its life, and it's ready to see a new life. And so I believe that by generating the development you'll see here that we've talked about, the increment that this provides, the economic growth that it'll provide to the city, definitely will continue to support us for years to come. And then coordination with the city on the Phase 3 of the River Greenway. Again, in those images, we saw some glimpses of that. Obviously, the city's working on the design of the River Greenway right now in conjunction with adjoining property owners, and will continue to do that. Ultimately, we are looking at the spring bringing bond authority forward to the City Council to support the construction of those improvements. Also in your TIF plan is the TIF eligible expenses and how those are laid out. What we typically do with these is we list all of the TIF eligible expenses that you can see with the project. So when we look at the $185 million of the project, there's a total of about 48, a little over $48 million worth of eligible expenses. What's being requested through the TIF request, and that's discussed in your TIF plan, is the 21, roughly $21.5 million TIF request, plus the financing cost associated with that, which again are all eligible expenses under South Dakota Codified Law. We also look at the potential or the fiscal impact that this will have if this project is built. And so when we look again at the, all of the images that we saw today, and if those get built in accordance with that plan, the project could generate approximately $1.6 to $1.7 million of increment. And so what we've done with this chart is actually in the plan, we look at, we don't look at year 1 of the TIF. We look at a few years down the road, kind of that mid-course, and see where it's at. If you look at the chart there, it shows that it's a $1.7 million increase of tax increment. What this does is it splits out all of the benefit that those taxing entities that we have will see from that. So currently, again, the property's collecting $57,000, and it's split proportionately between those four taxing entities. If this project happens with the TIF being approved, we'll see this increase in tax payment, and these are the benefits and the economic impact and fiscal impact that those taxing entities will see in the future. In the interim, if the TIF is approved, that increment will then go to pay those eligible project expenses that were on the previous slide. So if there's any questions about that, I'll definitely be able to answer those for you. Another item of TIF eligibility that we review from a staff level is, under Codified Law, is under Section 119-8. And there's two ways to really qualify a TIF. One is that the district has to be 25% blighted, or 50% of the area has to contribute to stimulate economic development to the state after the development occurs. And so when we look at this, you know, there's definitely a definition of blight that we could justify probably with this site, but really what that's driving this is the economic impact that this will have for the city and the state moving forward, as well as all those other taxing entities. And so again, when we look at that seven and a half acres, we look at the site now, and it's really that north half of the site is a storage facility, their construction yard for their current operations. And what we'll see after that, it will generate much more than 50% of the economic impact for that site. It will increase it significantly. We look at, obviously, the other requirement is that the improvement area will likely, or significantly enhance the value of the property, as well as the area in the district, and so we do believe that will occur as well. And then again, as we look at TIFs, we, you can justify them again through blight or economic development, and we believe that this project will significantly support the economic welfare of the city and the state by substantially increasing the value of those properties. So again, tonight, we're looking for support of the TIF, which would be 5C, which is designating the boundary and making a recommendation to council. And then project, the project plan, which is item 5D, which, for the tax increment district number 22. So again, that would be recommending approval to the City Council as well. And again, as I stated earlier, if we move forward to City Council, they will also be, have in front of them a development agreement that will detail the requirements associated with the request for the $21.5 million plus the financing cost. So with that, I'll open it up for questions, and we'll go from there.
Thanks, Dustin. Commissioners, any questions for Dustin? Alright, see none? Well, look for the petitioner. State your name and address.
Good evening. Luke Jessen with Lloyd Companies at 101 South Reed Street. Dustin did an excellent job of outlining all of the details of the project. I don't have anything to add from that perspective. I want to thank Dustin and Jeff for all the hard work that they've put in. They've sent us a ton of questions and have really vetted this project through. So we appreciate that from our end, and I think they've done a great job. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thank you. Any questions for Luke? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address this item? State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm David Sokitis, and I live here in Sioux Falls, 2215 East Marbury Street. And by the way of introduction, I like to go around and analyze different issues so that in a couple of years, if I get to be a mayor, I get to do a better job of it. So that's kind of why I'm here, just checking things out. TIF, okay, it looks like we're going to make things look quite a bit better. The current Sioux Steel site in town doesn't look so good. This is going to be quite, quite the improvement, so very good on that side. But we should look at some other aspects of TIFs in general. One of the problems of TIFs is that they do income redistribution. So if you think about who pays property taxes, as a percentage of income, property taxes are harder on poor and middle class than they are on the rich because the poor and the middle class pay a greater percentage of their income on housing. So if you change who pays property taxes, and with the TIF, you know, they're exempt from property taxes for a little while. That certainly helps the rich property developer, and it's harder on the existing property tax people because their rates go up. So you've got this income redistribution that you should carefully consider when anything comes up for a TIF. And another consideration is potential flooding. Global warming's making for more severe weather and makes for more frequent flooding. So the city should look at how to moderate flooding along the Big Sioux. Turns out that I'll be doing that. Got a PowerPoint plan for Tuesday, trying to reduce the potential for long-term flooding, and that would certainly benefit this particular construction here. Another thing I've noticed is that there's all these new projects coming up with city, city property or city influence. And a big election issue is the lack of affordable housing. I don't see how the city's going to work on that problem in this particular site. And there's an opportunity for that because you're putting in, you know, a number of voting units, but where's the consideration for the low-income housing that seems to be quite the problem? And that's what I have for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for David?
Thank you for the input.
Yeah. Anyone else like to address this item? If not, we'll close public testimony and look for commission action. On 5C.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve item 5C for the purposes of discussion.
Second.
So have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just wanted to call out, it looks as though the boundaries of the TIF in this case are aligned with the current property that's going to be developed. And, you know, some other ones we've seen recently that's been a little different historically. So I like to see this one dialed in like this. It's a good deal.
The thing I really like about, Mr. Chair, the thing I really like about this particular project is it feels like it's moving toward a density that we like to see in these downtown locations. We're seeing that as a trend throughout the downtown area, and this particular project seems to actually take that to a next level and really try to increase the density, increase a lot of walkability and usability of the spaces that they're creating, as well as all of downtown. I think this will actually benefit all of Phillips Avenue and beyond. It looks like it's really going to be a very positive project from those standpoints. I like the walkability that Dustin had mentioned because they broke up the building a little bit, so there's some flow between buildings so that it isn't a big mass that people have to walk around. And that looks like that's really going to support a lot of what we've been striving to do, both with Levitt and all of those areas around that. So I'm in support of this.
Mr. Chair, I would observe that there's a very high level of alignment with the existing plans, the comprehensive plan, the downtown development plan, and I, too, will be in favor of this particular project.
Okay. Well, all those in, any more discussion? Alright, well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Alright, passes. Then we'll vote on 5D.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve item 5D.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, there was definitely some good discussion already about not only the boundary and the project planned in one, so it's, I think we're in a good place.
Cool. Alright. Well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Passes. Next item.
Item 5E, Petition, Ordinance, Revising Zoning Ordinance, Section 160.576.
Good evening. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by the Planning Department to do some minor changes to what we classify as non-commercial yard signs. Those specific signs include rummage sale signs. They would include the ones you see for your daughter plays tennis in high school or for Lincoln. Would also include campaign yard signs that we have. And the change for this specific section is really, has to do with the election signs. We have an upcoming election coming up this year in April, and some of the issues that we have noticed with this specific ordinance is, the first is the time. It allows non-commercial yard signs to be up at 60 days per calendar year. The difficulty we're running into is most of the time around February, middle of February campaign, or people running for office like to put up signs. And that's fine if we just have one election, which is usually in the middle of April. As we see more and more, it seems like we have a lot more runoff elections, and those then push into the beginning of May, and it would be after that 60-day timeframe. And it just doesn't make much sense for those candidates to go out, pull all their signs, and then put them in a different yard for another two weeks so they can do the runoff election. So that's really why we went from the 60 to 90 days that would get you through the regular and then a runoff election. The other issue we are running into is currently it only allows you to put two nine-square-foot non-commercial yard signs in a specific property. As you know, with elections, sometimes we partner with the school board, and there could be a school board candidate, there could be a city council, a couple city council candidates, there could be a mayor candidates. And that really restricted property owners from only placing two candidates or two specific signs, and we felt that that wasn't a fair, fair thing for them to do. So we've actually removed that requirement, and a property owner could place a sign from each candidate running, or however they choose, but they would still be limited by those 90 days. And that's really the main purposes of this ordinance change, and the planning staff does recommend approval of this ordinance change.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Thank you. Anyone in the audience like to address this item? If not, I'll look for commission action.
Move for approval?
Second.
So have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, it makes sense, just as Jason mentioned, for the reasons he pointed out.
Yep, it's pretty straightforward, and it gives citizens a chance to do something that benefits everybody in their neighborhood.
Alright, well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Passes. Next item.
The next item is Public Input on Non-Agenda Items.
So at this time, we will allow anyone from the public to address the commission on non-agenda items. You're allowed up to five minutes. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Any public input? Seeing none? Look for...
Item 7, Election of Officers for 2020.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of motions. First one is to cast a unanimous ballot for Eric Nyberg as the new vice chair of the Planning Commission. I'll make that motion.
Okay, so the motion.
I'll second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? He's not here to say anything, but...
It's a good time for the vote to occur.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Alright.
Okay, I also have a motion to cast a unanimous ballot for Sean Irvin to serve as the new vice, our new chair of the Planning Commission. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? He's here.
Any campaign speech? Any campaign speech.
Speech. All right, well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, so we, I'll look for.
Well, just one more quick thing, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Larry, who's done an amazing job as chairman in two thousand and nineteen. We really appreciate all your hard work. And Sharon, who couldn't be here tonight, she's out of town for stepping up and doing the vice chairman job last year, we really appreciate you guys taking on that extra responsibility, and we really appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'll look for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, Sioux Falls.